To the Monday, July 7th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley, Chair of the God at Center Committee at Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd just like to ask everyone to just bow their heads and have a moment of silence first for so much tragedy over this weekend. Father God, I just come to you and I thank you for America and I thank you for this city. I thank you for our first responders and the people who rally around those in need. Lord, I just ask for peace that passes all understanding for all involved in these tragedies that have happened over the weekend down in Texas and right here at home. Lord, I just, I thank you for your grace and mercy and as we encounter one another, let us treat each other with grace and mercy. Lord, I just thank you for your gift from above and I thank you for your continued ruling here on earth. In your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vaught?
Here.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. And, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the presentation resolution 25759 until July 21st, please.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to postpone 25759 to July 21st. Is there a second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? And if I'm correct, this is the I-Star Award and our recipient can't be here today and we want to make sure they can be here. So, very good. Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the resolution 25759 is postponed for two weeks and that brings us to our proclamations for the Parks and Rec. What? Pardon me? Okay. Can I have a motion to go out of order?
I'll make that motion to go out of order.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Since we're going to wait for that, how about we just do citizens' request and we'll come back and do that resolution?
Sounds perfect.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor. Withdraw the motion, please.
I will withdraw the motion.
And the motion's withdrawn and we shall proceed. So now we've got citizens' requests and this will bring us to citizens' request. And Hannah Mullins, please come forward and you have five minutes, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to express my sincere commitment to being a responsible and respectful member of the community. In response to the concerns raised by my neighbors at the last hearing regarding my short-term rental property, I have taken several meaningful steps to address them directly. Specifically, in addition to adhering to the Good Neighbor Guidelines and our existing no-party policy, we will be posting two additional signs on the property clearly outlining the quiet hours. As mentioned in the previous meeting, we have completed the construction of a privacy fence to help reduce noise and provide added privacy for our neighbors. In response to the concerns about the trash disposal and in addition to the trash management plan submitted, I will also post signs on the trash bins with clear instructions on the proper waste disposal. I've also shared my direct contact information with my neighbors so they can reach me at any time, day or night. Beyond these operational measures and previously stated plans in the prior hearing, I've also taken an initiative in our shared community space. After hearing concerns from my neighbor Christine at the last hearing, I made arrangements with a landscaper to clean the area around the power pole between our properties. Unfortunately, due to inclement weather and a personal emergency on his part, the job was delayed. As a result, I took it upon myself to clear the weeds and overgrowth personally. I did not just do this to maintain appearances but to show my genuine care for the upkeep and well-being of our neighborhood. I remain fully committed to being a considerate and cooperative neighbor and I hope that these actions reflect my good faith and willingness to engage constructively with the community. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Next up is Maureen Sescus and please state your name and your address, please.
I do hear pretty well.
Good.
Maureen Sescus, 15201 East 41st Street South. In Independence, Missouri, a short-term rental operator needs to maintain liability insurance of at least $1 million to utilize a platform providing equal or greater coverage. Has Ms. Mullins given that information to you that she does have that insurance?
Yeah.
I got it off of our internet.
Okay.
It also requires obtaining a permit and adhering to safety and building codes. Have the Mullins added additional insurance company and coverage, excuse me, for renters? And has her homeowner's insurance approved the short-term rental in her coverage? That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up is Phoebe Forbes. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. As stated, my name is Phoebe Forbes. My address is 14906 East 41st Street South, Independence. I am the owner of that location. I've been there for about 15 years. I did attend the first meeting but did not speak because as other members who attended that meeting, we were under the opinion and that the 25% signatures that were required who oppose this short-term rental was enough to negate the application for the short-term rental. I understand that there are 40 other residents who have signed a petition to vote no on this short-term rental, but they were not accepted because they were not on the proper forms that the city needed. It's very unfortunate. I understand rules are rules, however, it's unfortunate that it was denied because of administrative procedure rather than the will of the residents in that neighborhood. I oppose this short-term rental because of the rental mindset of most people. When you rent a car, it's usually for a short term and, you know, oh, it's only a rental. I don't care if I have a few dents or if it's damaged or dirty when I take it back. So many times, a lot of short-term rental mindset is just that. Oh, it's just a rental. I don't care what's done with it or if it impairs parking or if it's loud and rowdy. Most, I think most short-term rentals are for sports kinds of activities and here in Kansas City area, you know, we were voted, I think, the loudest for the Chiefs and so forth. However, we expect that in our sports, but we do not expect that in our residential areas and close-by neighbors. And I wonder about the impact upon our police department and fire departments and emergency response people in trying to get past the parking issue and just the time responses of our police and fire department, emergency response. They have many, many things to respond to and I'm sure a gunshot or domestic disturbance is more priority than loud noise disturbances. But to the people that live next door to the loud disturbances who may have to get up at 5:00 in the morning and go to work, loud noises are very important to us. So, thank you for listening to us and I hope you vote no for this.
Thank you. Next up here is Harold Ellis. And Harold, come on forward and then please state your name and address, please.
I'm Harold Ellis. I live at 4002 South Drum Avenue and I do live next door to Hannah and Tim. And we share about 80-foot of fence and since the day they've moved in, they've been nothing but quiet and friendly. If it wasn't for their dog barking occasionally, you'd wonder if anybody was even there. And I just have to think that what they're doing by turning their home into an Airbnb is commendable. It shows initiative. They want to use their home to generate extra income and who of us couldn't use a little extra income? But running an Airbnb is not just sitting on your hands and watching the money roll in. It's a job and you have to keep your home presentable and attractive. You can't let the yard and the exterior fall into disrepair and the interior has to be kept warm and inviting. And we all, I think all of us neighbors benefit from that. You know, it's just, it's a win-win. I've stayed in numerous Airbnbs over the past few years and I find them preferable to a motel because you don't have, you know, people coming and going all night and kids running up and down the halls and banging around. But staying in an Airbnb is a commitment because you have to sign a lot of forms. You have to agree to a number of stipulations, things like the number of people, the number of people, the number of cars. You have to promise, you know, to keep the noise at a reasonable level and then you have financial obligations. If you mess up that home, you're responsible for it. The, it's the same way if you rent a car. Yeah, you can, you can run the snot out of that thing, but if you tear it up and you hurt it, you're still responsible to pay for that, for the damages. And, but typically, when I'm staying in an Airbnb, I'm just there for a brief time. I'm either passing through or I'm here, you know, in that particular city to see the sights and the attractions. So, I just think people tend to fear or they're uncomfortable with things they're not familiar with and I think if they did a little bit of background and checked into Airbnb and their rules and regulations, it would show them that in this case, there's nothing to fear. Tim and Hannah have a lot of money invested in their home and a lot of hard work and I think that they would do anything, whatever it takes, to protect that investment and I think we owe them the opportunity to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jeanette Miller. Can Jeanette please state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mayor Rowland and City Council members. Sorry. I am Jeanette Miller and I reside at 14804 East 40th Street, South Independence. I've got this written out and I would like to just kind of slightly deviate from it by saying, I've met this couple and they are wonderful people. They're sweet kids. They're the kind of neighbor that I would love to have in my neighborhood, to see them raise their kids and have their kids go to our schools. That's just an aside. I have, this is not personal. I wrote the petition that got over 30 signatures from our neighbors and I couldn't get it notarized because I didn't have the form, the proper form for it. I have that petition here with those signatures. But the proposal reads, "We, the undersigned residents and property owners of Independence, particularly those residing in this vicinity of 14904 East 40th Street South, do hereby respectfully petition the Independent City Council to take action regarding the establishment and operation of a short-term rental property at the aforementioned address, whereas the property located at the aforementioned address, they would operate as a short-term rental. Whereas, short-term rentals, when located in residential zones, have a detrimental, can have a detrimental impact in the character, safety, and quality of life within established neighborhoods." Impact in the, excuse me, whereas specific concerns regarding the short-term include but are not limited to increased traffic and parking congestion at an already congested residential area, noise disturbances, late-at-night parties, loud guests, I'm sorry, impacting peace and quiet, potential for increased property values for neighboring homes, transient occupancy leading to a loss of community cohesion and neighborhood identity, concerns about public safety and security with a constant rotation of unknown individuals, increased potential for intoxicated drivers in our streets as short-term rentals in this area are more likely to be used by people attending sports events, concerts, and the upcoming World Cup, inadequate waste management and trash accumulation, which you addressed. And thank you. Unfair competition with licensed hotels in the area. Whereas, we believe the operation of a short-term rental at this location is inconsistent with the established residential character of our neighborhood and poses a threat to the peaceful environment of our properties. Therefore, we humbly request the Independence Council to deny the request to establish a short-term rental at 14901 East 40th Street, case number 25405. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Renee Hughes and please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Renee Hughes. I live at 14804 East 40th Street South in Independence, Missouri. And thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Stewart Heights East is a modest residential area with single-family housing and it feels as though we're currently under some kind of, I don't know, attack or assault. There's already a shortage of affordable housing in the area and as original owners of houses in our neighborhood pass, young families are being priced out of the market by real estate companies and investors who buy $10,000 to $20,000 above market value and then they turn them into rental property. These houses are often vacant for months at a time and have frequent turnover. We have seen some of these houses turn into nuisance houses. The addition of a short-term rental house in our neighborhood will only continue to erode. Specific concerns, as have been mentioned, noise, short-term rental properties have a reputation for being used as party houses. I don't know if people are going to abide by the fine print. Parking is already congested in our neighborhood. It was built when people only had one car. So, there's not that much parking. At the proposed location, realistically, there's only room for two cars in that driveway without blocking the sidewalk. So, in the short-term rental proposal is to house up to six people, so there could potentially be more than two cars. At that address, increased potential for intoxicated drivers on our streets. Stewart Heights East is not a vacation destination. You don't come here for the mountains or the ocean or the lake. They come here for Chiefs games, you know, concerts, World Cup, all known for events where there's a lot of drinking and they're going to drive back into my neighborhood after they finish with their party. Also, they've been known to decrease property values, especially the immediate neighbors around the short-term rental. There is a loss of community cohesion and there's a feeling of decreased safety and concerns with the frequent turnover of people coming in and out of the house that you don't know. Applicants argue that they will vet renters, but that's not how Airbnbs work. They really have no personal contact with the renter until after the rental agreement is already signed. Once it's signed, then they have contact with them, but it cannot be canceled unless there's some major emergency like the house is not habitable. Applicants argue that they're just a phone call and five minutes away if trouble occurs, but realistically, if there is trouble, what are they going to be able to do? They're not going to go talk to a group of rowdy people who have been drinking. It was, it would be a bad situation and probably end up having to call the police anyway. They also tout the increased revenue to the area, but if someone wants to stay in the area for an event, they would likely spend more money if they stayed in a hotel because they wouldn't be able to cook in. They would have to go out to local restaurants. They're probably not going to party in their hotel room. They're going to party at the bar. So, I'm arguing that they would probably spend as much, if not more, money in our neighborhood if they stayed at a hotel.
You have one minute, ma'am. One minute.
In other neighborhoods, the short-term rental properties, the value tends to go down. This reduces property tax revenue that goes to our schools. We need families in our neighborhood to build safe, stable communities, not short-term rentals. We want to know our neighbors and their children. We want to have pride in homeownership and help build community. Please do not approve this request for short-term rental in our neighborhood. Think about it from a personal perspective. Would you really want an Airbnb next door to your house? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Pam Ellis. And Pam, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
I am Pam Ellis. I live at 4002 South Drum and we share a fence with Hannah and Steve and we have since they've been there. We've lived in our house in this neighborhood for 41 years. We've seen it all. We've seen the loud parties. We've seen, heard the gunshots in the houses behind us. So, these are people who owned the houses doing these things. We have long-term rental properties in our neighborhood. We've had trouble with them. The short-term rental, these are people who are coming temporarily to the neighborhood. They're not going to live there and I think I want to voice my approval for what they're trying to do. I came tonight so I could hear what my neighbors are saying and now I realize that they are really building out worst-case scenarios based on fear, things that are highly unlikely to happen. And if they happen, they can be resolved very quickly. I have stayed in Airbnbs. I have been on these properties. I have signed the agreements. I have been interviewed by Airbnb owners before I showed up. My husband, Brendan One, in Eugene, Oregon, and she wanted to talk to everybody who was going to be in the house. I mean, you can vet the people who come through. Parking, they have a double-wide driveway and we live there. We are more likely to be influenced than the people who are living two blocks over or across I-70 in the other neighborhood. Tim and Hannah take care of their property. That is something that I am very grateful for because in the 41 years, we've had neighbors that I was just glad when they would finally mow their lawn. Tim and Hannah are not that. They take care of their property. Since they've moved in, they have also been very respectful of all of the neighbors. They listen to what you say. They bring, they told us that this was going to happen. They showed up at our door and talked to us about it and asked our concerns and we talked to them about it. They have nothing to gain and much to lose by letting short-term renters destroy their home or disrupt the neighborhood. That's a hit to them personally. In addition, short-term renters wouldn't want to rent their place if it was in poor condition. So that gives them an additional incentive to keep the property up and well-cared-for and keep the trash carried out and make sure that when the renters leave, that the place is cleaned up and the yard is cleaned up and make sure the yard's mowed. So, that is a win for everyone who lives near them, which is us. Please allow this young couple to provide a service to tourists and earn extra income. I think that our neighbors are going to relax once they realize that they won't even know a renter's there unless they just happen to notice a different car in the driveway. Thank you.
Kim, I hope I do this right, but just from your laughter, I can tell it's not the first time somebody's challenged with your name. I'm going to give it a shot. It's Perniciano?
Pernicero.
Pernici?
Pernicero.
Pernicero?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Kim. So please come forward and say your name and your address, please, and thank you for your patience.
My address is 14900 East 40th Street. I'm across the street from Hannah and I don't have a problem with this and there is parking on the street because I live across. So there's, the street has no cars on it because I live on the street. And about the loudness and police officers, we have that in our neighborhood already, lots of it. So I don't see what the problem with that would be and they are a nice couple and I've lived there 17 years and I just think it should be allowed. I know everybody else over here is probably saying, no, 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 but you know, things have to progress. Can't stay back here in the 50s. We got to go up. So that's just what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next, Lucy Young. Please come forward and please state your name and address, please.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri, 64057. At the June 16th meeting, the city manager proposed charter change language. The city manager said, "Where we start to deviate from the Springfield model is, comes into play at Section 3.13." Disturbingly, Section 3.17 was removed. Even more alarming was the language added in 3.26. Thankfully, a couple of council members questioned that. The Bondurant decision that protects the IPL rate pairs is based on Section 3.17. Judge Bondurant cited, "The relationship between the City of Independence and its Power and Light Department is governed by the Charter." He continued, "Section 3.17 of the Charter provides that the municipality is owned and operated, is a public utility, and shall be operated in a business-like manner. The electric utility shall not be operated for the benefit of other municipal functions, shall not be used directly or indirectly as a general revenue-producing agency for the city. This is vastly different than economic development." The case discussed benefits that the city received, including power supplied to the city without charge, contributions to a municipal office building, and payment to the city portion of the gross revenue. Bondurant said that "The only benefit from power and light which the city is entitled is payment of amount in lieu of such..." is payment of amount in lieu of such taxes that are normally placed on private businesses. However, Judge Bondurant gave the city an option, saying, "This payment may be taken by the city in whatever form it chooses, as a direct payment, an interfund charge, or power supplies, supplied without charge." He added, "No benefit may be taken or received by the city from power and light in excess of this amount." So, according to the already-existing charter language, the city could have free power as provided, as that they had talked about and proposed, Section 3.26. That is, provided they give up the pilots paid to the city by IPL. The city should not try to have more than is reasonable. They can't have their cake and eat it too. Newly proposed Section 3.26 states that the public utilities shall furnish without charge adequate lighting for all streets, alleys, or public ways deemed necessary by the council to be lighted, and may, without charge, at the request of the council, furnish electricity, water, and sewer service to all city-owned buildings and grounds as needed. The utilities, especially IPL, cannot absorb this expense. This just transfers the city's expense onto the backs of the utility ratepayers. The proposed document never mentions reducing the amount of the pilots paid for, to IPL, that IPL pays to the city. A council member asked if this would clobber IPL. It would clobber the IPL ratepayers. Our local newspaper and a local energy club keep saying how IPL rates are the highest, and that IPL is losing money. How will transferring these additional expenses benefit IPL and the ratepayers? At the June 2nd meeting, the city manager stated, "Because our utilities are rate-funded, if costs go up, we just raise the rates." So, will a rate increase be needed to cover those costs? Although the language is ambiguous, the newly proposed Section 3.26 also locks in the 9.08 franchise fee that could only be changed with a vote of the citizens. Thankfully, a council member questioned the prudence of locking that amount into charter language. The city already receives a benefit not given to other local businesses, a special electric rate. The municipal rate is available only to the city for municipal buildings, park facilities, traffic lights, and publicly-owned streetlights.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The Bondurant decision stated that the city's present practice of applying the rate for large industrial customer meets the requirement as the same rate applied to other customers which consume similar amounts of power. Is the municipal rate circumventing that language? City buildings being placed under a specially-created rate for only the city shows favoritism to other, over other businesses that are not allowed that rate. Removing Section 3.17 will allow a construction of a phantom balance sheet. I urge you to tread very cautiously with this charter change language. Thank you.
And next on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. And so, I'll just read a part of the proclamation. Whereas, parks and recreation are an integral part of our communities throughout the country, including Independence, Missouri. And whereas, parks and recreations promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people that live near the parks, visit the city recreation facilities, and participate in our programs. And whereas, the parks and recreations promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas, parks and recreations encourage physical activities by providing space of Independence Athletic Complex, and numerous parks, and popular sports, and multi-use facilities, as well as classes and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And so, with that, the council and the mayor will recognize this month as Parks and Recreation Month. And so, shall we present the proclamation to, uh...
To me.
Very good. Thank you. And it'll be Diane Kaiser, you're, you're receiving it. So, Diane, thank you very much. So, I'll come around to the side. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I move for approval for the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second. And anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll pull number 12, please.
Number 12, and that is, uh, council actions on the Kansas City Area Transport Authority?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull num, resolution number two, sorry, resolution number 1, 25-760.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I would like to pull Resolution 2, 25-761.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull item number 2, item number 13, item number 14.
Hold on one second, so I can stay with you, and we make sure we're on the same hymnal, same page. So, number 2, number 13, and number 14, if I'm correct.
Correct. And Resolution 25762.
Okay.
I lost track, too. Councilwoman, can you repeat what you were wanting to pull, please?
Number 2.
Correct.
Number 13.
Okay.
Number 14. And the third, Resolution 25762.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else want to pull anything else for separate consideration? Councilmember Fears, anything? Okay.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we've got other items to be pulled, and Madam City Clerk, please call the roll call for the consent agenda, and then we'll poll, and then we'll talk about the other items individually.
Councilmember Fears? Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, 6 in favor, 0 opposed. Item number 1, Councilmember Wiley, the floor, uh, oh, excuse me, count number 2. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please forgive me.
First, I move approval of item number 2.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Thank you.
Uh, to inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, there's a whole bucket full of items on here that all have fiscal notes with them, and I just, can you just touch on why those things are coming now?
Yes, I'd be glad to, councilmember. So, tonight is the council's first meeting, uh, following the start of the new fiscal year. As you recall, our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30. Last month, the council gave approval to the fiscal year 25, 26 budget. Now, we are setting up our contracts that were, the funding was approved in the budget, but now, you know, many of these are on year-to-year basis, they have renewals, et cetera. So, tonight's agenda is always a little bit longer, because a number of contracts are being implemented for the new fiscal year. Specifically, tonight, what you're seeing is a lot of our contracts in our Technology Services Department, things like our cybersecurity software, and insurance, things like our email system, all those back-of-house things that are the backbone of the city that allow us to function, operate, and, and take care of the public business in the most efficient manner possible. Many of those are on here for your approval tonight.
So, just for people listening at home, all of these are budgeted expenses that we have just approved in the city budget. I often get questions about, you know, you, the money doesn't buy everything that it used to, and it's not just that we have inflationary pressure, but we also have new items. 15 years ago, we weren't buying body cameras, and 15 years ago, we weren't investing in cybersecurity and all of those things. So, I just appreciate your attention to thinking about the software and cybersecurity side of things, and this is one of the things in the software licensing. So, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 2? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 2 passes 6 in favor, 0 opposed. That brings us to item number 12. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, uh, I'll make a motion to propose, postpone this item until July 21st, so we can have a little bit more information and budgetary matters taken care of before we bring this for formal consideration.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to postpone this to July 21st. Any further discussion on item number 12? Seeing no further discussion, the motion is to postpone it to November, excuse me, to July 21st. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number 12 is postponed to July 21st. That brings us to item number 13. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, this is an unusual item. Can you give us a little more background and the implications for this particular issue on the square?
Yes, I'd be glad to. So, this item is, um, as a result of the Square Streetscape project that began earlier this spring and has continued through the summer, obviously, working very diligently with the contractor to try to have as much of that project done prior to the Santa Calagon Days Festival over Labor Day weekend. One area that was encountered as we began this project, and as you may guess, when you begin pulling up, uh, roads and sidewalks in the historic district, um, you're at risk of what you're going to find down there. Uh, one of the oddities that we found with this project was a basement that extended into, uh, the right-of-way. So, old building, had basement, um, that extended out, sidewalk that was over that and into the street area. Hope you all walked fast when you were going down Liberty. Uh, the, obviously, now we want to make sure that that's no longer a potential safety issue, so this change order is allowing us to, um, implement the engineering work to address that, um, oddity, if you will, and ensure pedestrian and vehicular safety into the future as part of this project.
So, you explained it to me that there's no dirt under it, it's actually the ceiling to a basement?
That's right.
And should that collapse, because we have a lot of weight on it, you would fall down into the basement of this building. Are we gonna have this done for Santa Calagon, or will this part be restricted?
More than likely, this part's going to still be restricted during the festival. And we've worked with our partners at the Chamber on that. They've been, the Square Association and the Chamber have been, um, very good partners. Um, we've had regular, routine meetings. Councilmember Perkins has been excellent at facilitating those conversations. So, they were aware of this situation, have been involved in helping us figure out the solution to it in a way that was cost-effective, but still met the spirit of the project, and then, of course, know, uh, that this may not be available to them for use during the festival.
Thank you very much. I, I mentioned earlier that this has been like an archeologic dig, you know, pulling up piping from 150 years ago. So, this is just one more unique aspect. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of this item.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for item number 13. Any further discussion on item number 13? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 13 of the consent agenda passes 6 in favor, 0 opposed. It brings us to item number 14. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, I just want to ask you to outline this item for people who are listening, and clarify that we are using Justice Center. I don't want it confused with the entire campus we were talking about with the general obligation.
That's right. With the general obligation bond, a proposal was put forward to, um, renovate the existing Independence Utility Center using, um, our marijuana sales tax funds, uh, and then building a full consolidated campus with, uh, what would have been voter-approved general obligation bond funds. Obviously, that issue, uh, didn't receive the necessary 4/7's voter approval level, uh, so we are still proceeding with using those marijuana sales tax funds to renovate the existing Independence Utility Center building for use by the police department with as many of the, uh, functions that are inside of the current police headquarters as we can today. Uh, that will provide some much-needed space relief, um, better, um, working conditions, et cetera. So, things that won't be able to move at this time are our detention unit, uh, our firing range, um, so, we're, but, um, number of other issues are able to be solved using the marijuana sales tax. Uh, council will recall, uh, several months ago, you gave approval to a public safety bond. That, this is the back end of that now, where we're locking in our pricing with our vendor to do those renovation, uh, work at the Independence Utility Center.
So, just for clarity, this doesn't solve some of our existing problems, so we still will keep people who are being held for court, they'll still stay in the jail cells in our existing police building. Court will eventually probably move over to that building as well. We haven't solved our evidence storage issue, we haven't solved where we keep our vehicles, so there are still issues that we need to grapple with as a council to figure out how we solve them as a community, but this is step one.
This is a step in the right direction.
Do we have a timeline?
Uh, so, you may recall that during the general obligation bond conversation, I talked to you about, um, price escalation. Uh, that's still very much a real thing right now. Um, contractors are telling us we're seeing about a half a percent per month in escalation. Uh, so, work, assuming approval of this tonight, uh, work will begin, uh, in earnest, and I believe we're just, uh, uh, second week of August, we'll be done with this.
And of course, we will have a robust communication plan to be sure we...
Starting. Sorry, pardon me. Second week of August, we'll be fully in construction mode at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, wanted to clarify that. I thought that was a little aggressive.
And we'll have a robust communication plan for the community, so that they know where they go for which particular services. I know that Rebecca and her team are top-notch at that, so just making sure we second that.
Yeah, we'll continue to, um, reach out through all of our different, both, um, traditional communication means, as well as, um, social, digital media, et cetera, so that we can reach all of our, uh, community members, uh, and help them understand, uh, where their services are located, and where they need to go for what particular service.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I move approval of item number 14.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember. Item number 14 has a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number 14? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 14 passes 6 in favor, 0 opposed. Brings us to resolutions. Councilmember Wiley, 25760, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we continue 25-760 to the July 21st meeting.
Thank you. We've got a motion to move 25761, or, excuse me, 25760 to the 21st meeting of this month. Is there a second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on 25760? Seeing no further discussion on 25760. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to postpone this to July 21st.
Any further discussion on 25-760? Seeing no further discussion on 25-760. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to postpone this to July 21st.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item 25-760 is postponed to July 21st, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25-761, and Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
I have some questions. Am I able to ask Hannah questions?
You can ask the city manager, please.
City manager? Okay. So, I just, I, this is her primary residence, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, correct.
Okay, and so my question was, where would she be staying while this, while this is being rented?
I'm deferring to our community development team who may have a little- Okay, our Assistant Director, Rick Arroyo, is going to come forward with a little more information, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. So, our application shows that they'll be staying at a 1600, give me a second here. 1600 East 25th Street.
Okay, so that's five minutes away, then?
Yeah, approximately.
Okay, thank you. So, I've had numerous emails and messages from concerned neighbors about this Airbnb in the last several days, and we heard their concerns, and I just feel like I have to take into account the concerns of those who live there, and while I sympathize with the homeowner's desire to make their property and operate, or generate income, after considering the community's concerns and the legal protest, I would be voting no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion on 25-761? Councilmember, please proceed.
Mr. Arroyo, is he available for more questions?
He is.
Okay. Come on back.
And, Mr. Arroyo, just for the sake of convenience for you, you may just want to stay here until we're completely voted on this issue.
Yes.
So, a couple of questions. We had a presentation on short-term rentals recently. We wanted to look back at kind of the compendium of short-term rentals that we have in the city, and I'm going to put you on the spot here. My recollection was, we roughly have 90 in the city. We have 60,000 residences, and of those, roughly 90 are short-term rentals. Am I in the ballpark?
Yes, you're in the ballpark.
Okay. I also want to understand that there's nothing that would prevent them from selling this house to be a rental house all the time, correct? There's no statute that would keep them from turning this into an all-the-time rental property. The neighbors can't complain about that or prevent them from selling it to someone who wants to rent it or renting it themselves, correct?
That is correct. It could be used as a long-term rental.
Okay. We define long-term rental as more than?
Thirty days.
Okay, thank you. And we made some modifications to our short-term rental statute that limited the number of unrelated people who can be in a house. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay, can you remind me what that is?
So, basically, you can't have multiple families renting it at the same time.
Okay. We also have the ability, as a city, to rescind the license after one year if we get more than three complaints, I think?
Yeah, that is true. So, we do have the ability to revoke a license in the event that we get complaints, either police complaints or a certain number, I think it's three complaints, you're correct. It would go through the process of going back to Planning Commission to revoke that permit, but there is a process to do that if we continue to have issues at that location.
And we give the short-term rental license to the person and not to the property, meaning that should she sell the house, the short-term rental is voided, and they would have to have a new application.
That is correct. We did add that as part of that code update.
When I recall, we've had one that we've had to rescind since we've been doing short-term rental.
That sounds about right.
Okay. Not every community goes through this process. In Blue Springs, if you own a house, you can do short-term rental. You don't go to Planning Commission, you don't go to the city, because they consider a rental a rental, whether it's for one week or 30 days, so their rules are the same.
That would be correct. There are some cities around us that don't regulate short-term rentals.
Okay. So, I went to look at this house in the neighborhood, because I always feel like if I'm going to vote on something controversial, I should go and take a peek at things. It's a beautiful house. It is clearly well-loved. They have taken wonderful care of it. I don't know that there will be any difference in the way that that is cared for when it is a rental property. I always am really attentive to the people for whom the biggest impact, the people who are next door, the people who are across the street. I also appreciate that you've probably put a lot of resources into this house. It is easy to say no to everything that is different. I have given such great thought to this. This is really the, one of the great ways to be able to attract tourists to your town. I will tell the people that I see coming in to do these Airbnbs, a lot of them are families who are traveling to softball tournaments or other things, where having, you know, their kids in a hotel room is not a great mix for them, and doing them in a house gives them better opportunities. In balance of all of the things we've heard with respect to the people who don't want change of ownership to allow the rental, short-term rental, I am going to choose to vote yes on this. It does have a valid legal protest, which means it has to have five yeses in order to pass. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25-761?
Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question from Mr. Arroyo, if I could. I just would like to know of the short-term rentals that we have in town, I know we have a provision to be able to, you know, discontinue those if there are problems. Have we had any that we've discontinued, and have we had any significant problems that you're aware of?
I'm only aware of one. As of recent, we have not.
Okay. Well, you know, I've weighed this one pretty hard as well myself, and have, and I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. My brother used to live in that neighborhood, and so I've been there a number of times. And, you know, I do, like Councilmember McCandless said, I feel like I need to put the most weight to the people who are the closest, and we heard from those folks tonight that they were supportive of this, and so, you know, we, this would be, if it passed tonight, it would be in place for a year, and then would have to, it would be renewed, and so if there's a problem, we can, you know, I address it at that point in time. Hopefully, there won't be, and so I'm going to choose to vote yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion on 25-761? Okay. Seeing no further discussion on item 25-761, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, and this votes in order for it to pass.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. The item does fail because it needs five affirmative votes. There were four affirmative, two in opposition, so the item does in fact fail. So, that brings us to item number 25-762. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just really wanted to highlight this item, and so, Mr. City Manager, if you could speak about this, please.
I would be glad to. This is our collective bargaining agreement with the Steelworkers Union that represents several of our employees here at the City of Independence. Really proud of both representatives from management, as well as the labor organization who worked over a period of several weeks and months to hammer this out. As they say, no deal's ever perfect, but I think we got a lot of good items inserted in here that meet the needs of both our employees, as well as help us run a strong, financially responsible organization.
Thank you very much. I move approval of 25-762?
Thank you very much. We've got a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for 25-762. Any further discussion on 25-762? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, 25-762 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our regular agenda, and this brings us to a public hearing, which I will now open, and it's a public hearing for new information only.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 13893 East 35th Street Court South, from I-1 Industrial to C-2 General Commercial. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on May 13th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is to rezone a property at the corner of East 35th Street South and East 35th Street Court South, from I-1 to C-2, to allow a convenience store. This will also be part of the next public hearing that would come up, but with that, I have no new information.
Thank you very much. That will close this public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-044, second reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District C-2 General Commercial for the property located at 13893 East 35th Street Court South. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-044?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To address the city manager?
Please proceed.
So, if there are problems with this, can the, like, the business license can be revoked?
Yes, so there are, yeah, pardon, didn't mean to cut you off. There are provisions in city code that if we were to receive a certain, and there's no qualified number, but if we see a pattern of issues, whether they be calls for public safety service, or certain health code violations, or property maintenance code violations, then staff has the authority under the city code to hold an administrative hearing. It would obviously be our preference to try to identify those issues in partnership with the property owner or business manager, as it may be, and then look to remedy those so that they can stay in operation, but if a business is unable to comply with the city code, particularly after several repeat encounters with the city, then we do have that authority to revoke that license.
Okay, and do we know what the hours of operation for this business is going to be?
I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Arroyo.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I could jump in, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, is this portion just for the rezoning of the property? In the next section, it would be for the actual special use permit of the property?
You're correct about that, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that we were all in the-
You're right.
The same portion there.
Great clarification. Thank you, Councilmember.
One moment, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
May I suggest that we hold this question over for the special use permit-
That'll work.
-section, and we'll just handle the zoning section now, if that would be okay with Councilwoman Vought?
Yes, that's okay.
Very good. No objection from Councilmember Vought, so that'll allow us to proceed unless there's any other questions on this item with regards to the rezoning. And that way, I'll give, or give Mr. Arroyo opportunity to look up that question. Councilmember McCandless?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to be sure that I am completely clear about the location of this convenience store. So, this is across the street from the old Cargo Largo and-
That is correct.
Okay.
So, I'm not actually seeing the actual hours of operation listed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Further discussions on 25-044, second reading. If there's no further discussion on 25-044, second reading. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and there's four in favor, two opposed, the motion carries, and that brings us to a public hearing. New information only. I'll open the public hearing.
A public hearing for the special use permit application to operate a convenience store at 13893 East 35th Street Court South. New information only.
So, this is the special use permit for the said same location. Planning Commission didn't see this on May 13th. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this special use permit, and again, this is for, because this particular location is within 500 feet of residential, it does require a special use permit to use that property as a convenience store. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-045, second reading. An ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a convenience store without fuel sales at 13893 East 35th Street Court South in Independence, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25-045? Please proceed.
So, I live down the street from this location, and I drive that street several times a day, so I do have concerns about traffic, foot traffic. I just, I don't know. I don't feel like I can support this. I don't think that's the area that should have a convenience store with coming in and out of Cargo Largo, the train tracks are right there. I don't know. That's, so I will be voting no for this.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on 25-045? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-045.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 25-045 passes four in favor, two opposed. That brings us to a public hearing. On new information only, we'll open the public hearing. Please proceed, Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the preliminary development plan application for the property at 1550 South Nolan Road for approval of a body shop. New information only.
Thank you. This PUD was considered by Planning Commission on May 13th. Also, Planning Commission- Also, Planning Commission did vote in favor of this planned unit development. This is a revision of a PUD that was for Cable Dahmer, the Crest Champions on Nolan Road. This was actually approved by this body back in August nineteenth of 2024. They had some revisions that altered the building expansion. Essentially, it goes from the building being expanded from the west side to the south side. It did require revision in the PUD plan, and that is what you have before you. With that, I have no new information.
Thank you. This will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-four-six, second reading. An ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at one-five-five-zero South Nolan Road in District C-two slash PUD, General Commercial slash Planned Unit Development in Independence, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, zero-four-six?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and twenty-five, zero-four-six passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to ordinances, twenty-five, zero-four-three. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-four-three, second reading. An ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of the pavilions at Hartman Heritage Community Improvement District, establishing the district, making findings and authorizing actions related to the establishment of the district. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, zero-four-three?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We talked about this at a previous council meeting, and there were questions raised about having more than one taxing jurisdiction in this area. Certainly, there is a taxing jurisdiction around the Independence Event Center and some of the surrounding businesses there. Certainly, the majority of that revenue generation comes from the event center, which means only people who are attending the event center are paying that tax or within the small area of surrounding businesses there. So I got into thinking about, where am I doing my shopping? Are there all the opportunities I want in Independence? And more importantly, if my mom was still driving, could she be able to get to all the places that she wants in Independence? And the answer is, not everything I want is here, because we haven't been able to keep as many and attract as many new businesses for retail as we wish. So, the nearest retail place for some of the specialty items is Lee Summit. So, I went out to Lee Summit, and yes, I did, I spent some money in Lee Summit, so I'm going to confess that right here in front of this body. Because I wanted to see what their cumulative tax was on the things that I was spending. I went to dinner at Roots. Their cumulative tax there was ten percent, and I went to Dick's Sporting Goods, and theirs was nine-point-five-one percent. So, that is well within the cumulative tax that we are talking about for the establishment of a CID. Part of the reason I am comfortable voting for this is seventy percent of those businesses are currently empty, and those buildings have really been abused. They have been stripped for copper, et cetera. So the investment required by the developer is not just to bring in someone new and build it out for them, they have to remediate the destruction that was done to those sites. For that reason, I am comfortable in supporting the CID to be able to breathe new life into that shopping center. So, thank you for indulging me. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else have further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, yes, please proceed.
Just comment that, you know, CID's are a unique animal in the, in the whole taxing business, in that they are something that the owners vote to, to take on themselves, and that they initiate the process, and they vote and agree among themselves that, yes, this is something we want to do. I, I have had some, some emails and some comments from folks that are concerned that this is going to price that area out of the market, or similar kind of concerns. And I, I just don't think that that would be a problem in this case, given that, you know, they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to do this if they didn't think they could handle it and justify it. And so, I really think this is a good move on the part of the owners, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion on twenty-five, zero-four-three. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Uh, no. This item passes five in favor, one opposed, and that brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-four-seven, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the Jackson County, Missouri, nine-one-one system fund through a resolution passed by the Jackson County, Missouri Legislature, which allocates four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-one dollars to the City of Independence, Missouri, for the police department's use, appropriating the necessary funds and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-four-eight, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs. Fiscal year 2024, Burn Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program, through a memorandum of understanding with Kansas City, Missouri, which allocates fifty-thousand-two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars to the City of Independence, Missouri, for the police department's use, appropriating the necessary funds and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-four-nine, first reading. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for pedestrian safety enforcement programs from October one, 2025, to September thirtieth, 2026, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project, and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-zero, first reading. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement for LUTSAC conference fees and an overtime program for hazardous moving violations enforcement from October one, 2025, to September thirtieth, 2026, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project, and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-one, first reading. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of one-million-one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of drug recognition expert conference fees and overtime programs for the Police Department for impaired driving enforcement and youth alcohol liquor compliance checks from October one, 2025, to September thirtieth, 2026, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project, and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-two, first reading. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for occupant protection enforcement programs from October one, 2025, to September thirtieth, 2026, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project, and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-three, first reading. An ordinance approving a final plat for Ty Brook Estates, second plat located west, west of Powell Road, north of Truman Road in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-four, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-six Single Family Residential and District C-two General Commercial to District R-six Single Family Residential for the properties located at one-five-four-three-zero and one-five-four-four-zero East US Twenty-four Highway. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-five, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-one Industrial and R-twelve Two Family Residential to District R-six Single Family Residential for the property located at one-one-three-zero-seven East Aaron Lane. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-six, first reading. An ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a convenience store without fuel sales at one-zero-four East Lexington Avenue in Independence, Missouri. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-seven, first reading. An ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen, of the Independence City Code pertaining to the billboard setback requirements. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-eight, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of Crystler Stadium to the Independence School District and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents associated with said transfer. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-five-nine, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the removal and destruction of municipal court records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such destruction and are the subject of Circuit Court Administrative Order twenty-five, Order Number 2025 dash two-one-seven, 2025 dash two-one-eight, and 2025 two-one-nine. First reading.
Thank you, and that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, greetings from Atral Bottle Scout Reservation, where in about two hours south of you in central Missouri, where I can assure you that it is sunny and hot. And I can also, though, assure you that, that there's about fifteen hundred scouts and scouters here doing good things to try to build future leaders of our country. So, that's, that's what I'm about this week. I just want to just say a couple of things. The last, since our last council, you know, like other councilmembers, I've been involved in a number of different things, and a lot of what I've been doing is relative to the fire department, coincidentally. And I spent a morning with the folks at Station Three on the sea shift, and I want to thank those guys for bringing me in and welcoming me to their station. Fortunately, we didn't have a lot of activity that morning, so that was a good thing, but I did get to watch them train and do some things that they were doing. And then, last week, we spent the morning with the fire ops group, and I'm sure other councilmembers will talk about that as well. I just want to thank everybody that helped put that on. That was certainly an eye-opening experience, and unfortunately, one that is needed for our, our work, and we saw what, just in the last few days, the, the damage that was done, the loss of life, which is catastrophic for those people affected in our city. And so, hearts and thoughts go out to them. But I do want to thank the folks that, that put on fire ops, and appreciate what they did for us, and for those that went through that program. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fears. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to second what Councilmember Fears said about the fire ops. That was an incredible experience, like a once-in-a-lifetime thing, which became more meaningful in the light of the tragedy that happened on the Fourth of July. And I just want to thank IFD and our first responders for their dedication to our community. And then, I want to remind people, and I can't believe that it's already been six weeks since announcing the first popsicles in the park, but tomorrow night, July eighth, is the final popsicles in the park of the summer, so don't miss it. Last week, at Sycamore Hills, it was the largest crowd yet, with over two hundred showing up to enjoy the entertainment and the popsicles. So the final event is at Rotary Park, located at one-zero-six-one-five East Twenty-Fourth Street, and the entertainment is Wicked Liars Comedy, which they say they're hilarious. It's a free event, and thank you to Blackburn, Blackburn Orthodontics for being this year's presenting sponsor, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's been a very busy three weeks in Independence. I'm just going to highlight a few things I've been doing. I'm going to start with the Independence Fourth of July Celebration Saturday. It was a beautiful night. I think many cities host firework displays, but we're the only one that has the Spirit of Independence Band performing live patriotic music in sync with the show. So it's, it's the best one around. It was a great evening, and I want to thank everyone who was responsible for putting such a monumental event together. Then I was honored to attend the Fourth Annual Independence Juneteenth Celebration. It was a really powerful gathering of our community, and I especially appreciated the thoughtful speech from Jackson County Prosecutor Melissa Johnson. On Saturday, June twenty-first, I joined hundreds of residents for Project Shine at Bingham Middle School. I spent the morning painting a classroom and was really happy to see so many community members who gave their time and talent to brighten the schools and make them more welcoming, welcoming for next, next year. That same day, I stopped by Fire Fest at Cable Dahmer Arena. It was a really good cha, great chance to see antique and modern fire equipment up close, and we also were able to watch some impressive demonstrations from the fire teams. And then, like Council, the Councilmember Vought and Fears said, several of us participated in Fire Ops 2025. We were suited up in full protective gear with a breathing apparatus to experience just a small piece of what our firefighters do daily. I really struggled with the heat and the mask, which gave me a really deep appreciation for what these men and women do every day. I also want to thank the Independence Fire Department and IAFF Local seven-eight-one for creating this opportunity for us. It was a really monumental task, and it was a really powerful experience for all of us. And again, two days later, our community suffered a heartbreaking house fire that claimed two lives. My sincere condolences go out to the friends and families of those we lost. I'm also great, grateful for our firefighters and first responders who showed up to fight the blaze, and we've endured a lot of loss like this, this year, and I know that people in our community are really feeling the weight of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Have to also second the appreciation for the fireworks. It was terrific. We had nothing to do with the weather, but it is easily the most delightful one I think I've ever been to in Independence with the perfect, perfect evening. Earlier that day, Sugar Creek is so generous that they let independents come and participate in their parade. It's always a great time. Saw all kinds of friendly faces in the crowd, you know, get to get candy, and it's just like a really nice community space, and it's nice to be able to do things in partnership with our, with our friends in Sugar Creek. I will say that the fire training, I think, was especially designed to remind me that I am both claustrophobic and weak, and that the fire department will, under no circumstances, hire me to do any of these jobs. And plus, I look really, really bad in that lumpy outfit, so I'm going to say that Chief Walker needs to find me a better-looking suit for next year. But overall, they attended very carefully to our safety, and that was appreciated, mostly because this was fear-inducing for all of us, like climbing purposefully into a place on fire seems like a very bad idea. So, I appreciate the time that they spent with us, that we felt comfortable. So not only did we have two people die in a fire, but we had a firefighter get hurt. He is home, and so we always want to just remember that these are not things that happen without risk. We have just survived all of the fireworks for the last four days, and just a reminder, that time has passed. We are now done with our fireworks in people's backyards. And I know you'll be hearing that this fire was caused from embers from the fireworks that the family had been using. So, just a reminder that we all have to be smart, not just to protect our own homes, but our neighbors as well. So, we hate to ever have to talk about that. Fire's done nineteen rescues this year. That's a bucketful. It's more than they normally do, so people really need to attend to the safety in their homes so that we don't have to come and rescue you. My last item is just to talk a little bit about the Parks and Recreation Survey that is out there. You guys may have remembered that we spent months talking about Adventure Oasis. We had increasing cost of operation. We had to pay extra to be able to hire lifeguards because we couldn't keep, keep young people to do that. The cost of maintaining it had gone up, and our attendance The cost of maintaining it had gone up, and our attendance had fallen by a third. So that was a financial spot that we had to make a decision. However, this is our time to make a community plan around our Parks and Recreation dollars. Do we want a water feature that's available 10 weeks out of the year? Do we want to invest in something else that we are able to have services that are year-round? So if you get a chance to participate in that survey, I know that we would appreciate the input because we want the Parks and Rec to serve you the very, very best that it can. So I look forward to hearing the results of that study when it comes back to us. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo the comments that my fellow colleagues have mentioned of the events that happened over the past week. It seems like it's been a while since we've been here. The fire training was excellent. The fire operating training that we did last week put a whole lot of things into perspective. Also, not only was members of the council were there, we had Representative Jobe there, and also some of the ladies from the peer support organization that works with our fire services here, so they could get a good understanding of what those men and women who donned that gear have to do and go through. It was a good, good eye-opening experience. I'm glad I did it. This is the first one I've done in a long time. I'm trying to think since probably the first time I was on the council, so it's been a long time. So it was a good reminder of the things that they do and have to deal with every day. And as one of the firefighters said, sometimes they have to do this two or three times in a shift, if you can imagine that. But that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I agree with the councilmembers that commented on the Fourth of July, which actually on the Fifth this year, and I thought that was a great move to put on the Fifth this year. It was excellent. So love that. And my granddaughter was there, and she said, "That was really cool, Papa." So it's two thumbs up for that. And also attended the June 19th, Juneteenth event. Melissa Johnson did a great job there speaking, and it was a great event. So with that being said, and also, just like other councilmembers said, you know, our, on behalf of the City of Independence and all of us, our heartfelt condolences for the family and friends affected by the loss on July 4th. Our thoughts are with them and during this difficult time, and we stand together as a community to support them. And please know this from Fire Chief Walker, if you need a fire alarm, they will, you call us, they will install it. So please keep your home safe. It is the, one of the best ways to make it safe, make it safe in your home, to wake up in the middle of the night and get out. So with that being said, Mr. City Manager, I am sorry to make you fall with condolences, but please proceed.
Well, they're appropriate, Mayor, so no worries there. Just wanted to give the council a couple of quick updates tonight. The first of the month is always exciting because data about our month activities prior start to roll in, and there's a couple of highlights that I would like to share with you. Business licensing activity in our city is really strong right now. In June of this past year, or this past month, there were 503 new applications and renewals in our city, which is ahead of our pace year-to-date for the same period of 2024. Not only are we seeing a bunch of new businesses come, but existing businesses are renewing their licenses as well. And then business licensing also involves our landlords, making sure that our landlords have their business licenses as well. And all of those statistics are up as well, both new licenses and renewals. So overall, this report really highlights a positive trend in business and landlord licensing activities, really indicating growing business activity in our city, which is something I think we're very proud of and pleased with. And then also in that same vein, building permit reports. That captures everything from new construction to renovations or alterations of existing space. Listen to this. In June of this year, the city issued 6.59 million in building permit reports, which brings our year-to-date total to about 62 million, which is a 25% increase over the $49 million that we had collected at this time, or not collected, but the valuation of the permits that we had this time last year. So again, those are the trends that are really reflecting growing investor confidence and increasing business activity across the city. So something we'll continue to keep an eye on, but very positive trends right now in the local economy. Did want to remind the council, next Monday night for the study session, among the items on there is a discussion of IPL governance. I know we had a speaker tonight. I just want to clarify, on June 16th, you had a city council roundtable. We had about a two-hour conversation where we had a good council conversation about what you wanted to see in there, ideas thrown out on the table. We have provided a revised draft from that meeting to reflect both the things that the council wanted added in, as well as the things that you didn't want to carry forward. The purpose of this coming Monday night's meeting is to review that with you and then get direction as to if and when the council may want to bring forward a potential charter amendment about how your electric utility is governed here in this city. So we'll look forward to that conversation with you as well. Mayor, with that, I have nothing else to add this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And with that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.